Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education's 24th Annual Presentation of Awards for Distinguished Service to Public Education. I am Brenda Wolf, President of the Board. On behalf of all of the Board members, I want to thank you for being here this evening. Due to the continuation of the COVID-19 pandemic, the format of this year's awards will remain virtual. What is not different is the incredible pride and gratitude we have for each of our awardees. The final slate of nominees was determined unanimously, and my colleagues and I remain grateful for the opportunity to recognize these individuals that helped make Montgomery County Public Schools the amazing system it is. Tonight, we honor members of our community for their exemplary work on behalf of all of our students. To our 22 award recipients, we are happy that you are here virtually, and we wish you a memorable evening. The program provides details about each awardee as shared by their nominator. The nominators will provide you a few highlights about each awardee, and then each awardee will share their own remarks. So please grab your beverage of choice and sit back and help us celebrate these incredible individuals and organizations.
Our first category of awards this evening is in the Community Individual category. This award is presented to three community individuals who have made outstanding contributions of time, talent, and expertise to MCPS. And I'm so pleased to be asked to introduce this award because I believe so strongly in the value community adds to the work that we do as a school system. And I have had the pleasure and honor of working with so many powerful community members and allies over the past many years.
Hello, I am Nora Collins, the proud principal intern at Wheaton Woods Elementary School in Rockville, Maryland. I stand here today to present proudly the name of Byron Diaz. He is our Linkages to Learning Family Therapist, among other service-oriented services that he provides. I have nominated him for the Distinguished Service Award Individual Award. As a result of his 16 years of service, one statement he strongly makes is, he's not here to just make a difference, he's here to make an impact so families can not only make a living, but earn a life. I'm very proud to nominate him today.
Hello, my name is Byron Diaz, Family Case Manager with the Linkages to Learning Program at Wheaton Woods Elementary School. I want to thank Dr. Harris, Principal at Wheaton Woods Elementary School, Assistant Principal Ms. Collins, and the Montgomery County Board of Education for the nomination for this award. During the pandemic, it has been very difficult to provide programs. Whatever the Linkages to Learning Program has continued to be present in many areas, supporting our schools and the surrounding communities. Thank you for recognizing the professional work, being down at the valuable contribution of the people who through their enthusiasm and spirit provide support programs and education to the community, along with our partners in MCPS. The second attention is for all of us to work at Linkages to Learning in Montgomery County. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education for recognizing Dr. Susan Douglas of Georgetown University for the Distinguished Service Awards. I've had the pleasure of knowing Dr. Douglas for many, many years and have seen what she has given to teachers and educators throughout the United States, but specifically here in Montgomery County, Maryland, how she has continuously served our educators, our community, and our students. Some of the accomplishments and some of the aspects that Susan has done to the community are reviewing textbooks to make sure that we in the classroom have the most authentic information pertaining to American Muslims Islam, so that our students see themselves in our textbooks and they don't encounter misconceptions that can lead to bullying in the classroom. Dr. Douglas also worked on state standards and has worked closely with MCPS to make sure that our standards in all of our high schools and middle schools make sure that we teach about Islam in the most historically and academic fashion. And then finally, Dr. Douglas continuously creates resources that educators can bring into the classroom. She provides opportunities for educators to leave the classroom and explore the many resources and arts that's here in the DC area. She brings educators onto Georgetown's campus where we have an opportunity to hear from leading scholars, as well as break and have lunch, experiencing some of the wonderful foods that many of the American Muslim community has brought to this area. So it is a great honor that I have to say that Dr. Susan Douglas receiving this Distinguished Service Award, a truly remarkable woman and an honor that is befitting of her service to Montgomery County.
My name is Susan Douglas, and I'm K-14 Education Outreach Director at Georgetown University. I'm pleased today to offer warm greetings to members of the Montgomery County community for the honor of receiving a Distinguished Service to Public Education Award in the category of Community Individual. Thanks to the members of the Montgomery County Board of Education for selecting me for this honor. I want to thank the two centers at Georgetown University for which I've been conducting education outreach for several decades. One of those is the Al-Walid bin Talal Center for Muslim-Christian Understanding, and the other is the Center for Contemporary Arab Studies, where I now serve as K-14 Education Outreach Director. Both centers have supported teachers in our region and beyond for many decades with their work. I am also pleased to recognize the efforts of several employees in Montgomery County Public Schools who recommended me for this award. Mrs. Samira Hussain is a family service worker and tireless advocate for education in her community, who has helped organize events around Arab Heritage Month for several years. I've had the pleasure of working for the past several years also on curriculum and staff development with Mrs. Tracy Oliver-Gary, Social Studies Content Specialist for Montgomery County. Both are creative and innovative educators who put out terrific efforts for students and teachers. I also want to recognize Chris Murray, who teaches Social Studies at Bethesda Chevy Chase High School, who has engaged me in his efforts to facilitate religious literacy and professional development for several years. Finally, thanks to the hundreds of teachers who have attended our events, who take the opportunity to acquire knowledge and resources for their students. I'm grateful for many opportunities to offer workshops and seminars to Montgomery County teachers in social studies, humanities, and other fields. I look forward to doing my best to support teachers and their students toward equitable and inclusive global education in the future. Thank you very much.
I am pleased to speak about Kate Hayden, the Managing Director for Academy Development with the National Academy Foundation, now called NAF. Working with the county for the past five years, acting as a manager for all MCPS NAF programming, she has provided MCPS staff with professional development opportunities, secured scholarships and internship opportunities, and helped with many other activities. She has provided exceptional customer service to ensure that students in the NAF academies can fully utilize all of the resources. She is an active participant on the Information Technology Foundation's Board of Directors, working closely with the foundation office to increase NAF visibility and enhance connections between industry and educational partners. As a representative for NAF and working on behalf of the ITF, Ms. Hayden has worked to increase the presence of national partnerships within MCPS. For example, she has connected Verizon volunteers with the NAF AOIT Academy Programs in MCPS. These volunteers work to support students by assisting with mock interviews, providing guest speakers to classrooms, and providing student internships in the local region. As a star supporter of IT, NAF, and CTE programming at the Maryland state level, she has worked closely with state leaders to ensure that IT programming throughout Maryland is rigorous and accessible to all students. Although Ms. Hayden is based out of Oklahoma, she travels to the DC region frequently to provide in-person support for the programs in the NAF academies. She meets monthly with the central office staff to ensure that the program offices are supported and kept abreast of changes and the latest opportunities. It is my sincere pleasure to congratulate Kate Hayden on this award.
Hello, my name is Kate Hayden. I'm the Managing Director for Academy Development at NAF, a national nonprofit that brings education, business, and community leaders together to transform the high school experience. I'm honored to be receiving the Distinguished Service to Public Education Award from Montgomery County Public Schools. NAF has been working with the district for 27 years, and I've had the opportunity to be a part of this team since 2018. I'm currently working with nine outstanding information technology and finance academies in the district, serving just over 2,000 students. I'm so proud of the work that teams in the district are accomplishing, even during COVID, especially with student internships and industry certifications. I don't have to tell anyone what a challenge this past year has been, and yet the teachers and administrators, counselors, and work-based learning coordinators have really plugged in and supported students despite these challenges. And NAF has really innovated this year with tech-enabled learning, exploring virtual internships, and providing virtual work-based learning experiences to all of our academies. I was thrilled to see one of the alumni from your district, Natasha Singh, from the class of 2002 at Gaithersburg, represent your district at our annual benefit this year. Equally fun is that one of your students, Lexi Chang, from Northwest High School's Academy of Finance, served as one of the 26 virtual interns this year at NAF. This has been quite a year, and we at NAF have big plans to impact more students, to be a thought partner with you, to look ahead and support your continued success, and to meet students where they are so they can be future-ready. Thank you so very much for this recognition.
Our second group of awards is in the Community Group category. These three awardee groups are making positive differences in the lives of MCPS students and staff, as well as the community. The awardees are the Literacy Council, Vaccine Hunters, and Women Who Care Ministries.
I felt nominating the Literacy Council of Montgomery County was important because of the work with our community. The LCMC works to advance social and economic equity for underserved adults through academic instruction and workforce development. They teach adults to read, write, and speak English in a multicultural community, where English proficiency is not only a tool for success, but also a way for them to engage with our school system. I have seen firsthand the passion and commitment from their teachers, volunteers, and staff. During our collaboration to offer English as a second language classes to MCPS parents, the LCMC staff was always there, always available, even during weekends, to answer questions from our parents and our community. I am very grateful, and I know many parents are very grateful of all that they have done for our community.
Hello, I am Gabriel Martinez-Cavera. I am the Executive Director of Literacy Council Montgomery County, LCMC. I'm here just to say a quick thank you to the Board for my nomination, for the Board's nomination of LCMC. This is an amazing award to get, and obviously it means a lot to us. LCMC is an adult education program, so we think of our MCPS brothers and sisters in education as just that, brothers and sisters. We're here to support, we're on the other side of things, whereas they are supporting the children, we are supporting their parents. We feel that, as adult providers, we feel that, you know, that is one of the missing pieces that so often gets kind of just lost, how to support the parent, because the parent will in turn support the child. And we feel not only that by us educating our adults in the county, especially underserved and underskilled, we feel like that's going to have a real effect, and then we're already seeing a real effect on the support those parents can then have with their children. Of course, as adult education providers, we're also passionate about the parents themselves, and we feel that communities can really rise, and that all the push that right now that we really have in this country for social, racial equity, that's going to happen in part if you've got communities who feel empowered. And one of the ways we know communities will feel empowered is if the individuals in those communities feel like they have the skills to move up socially and economically. So for all of that, we really thank you, the Board, for this nomination. We're very honored to receive it, and we hope to keep working with MCPS in the future. Thank you.
Hello, I am Mark Stern of Silver Spring. Jessie, my wife of 60 years, has heart disease, and my goal is to protect her from health risks. The Vaccine Hunters found for her the appointments she sought. These Montgomery County public school teachers have volunteered to help more than 20,000 senior citizens and others schedule and receive anti-COVID-19 vaccines. We admire and respect educators. These Vaccine Hunters teach full-time, and then as a sort of homework, advance public health in Montgomery County. We believe these Vaccine Hunters are actually vaccine finders, and we are very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciatively accept this award on behalf of the Vaccine Hunters, Las Casas Vacunas. We are a group of eight MCPS educators named Tanya Aguilar, Kathleen Bartels, Deana Sikoni, Tanya Perez-Puentes, Maisy Lynch, Courtney Mason, Maria Peterson, and me, Becky Taylor. We are so honored and appreciate your support and acknowledgement of our hard work helping our community. Our work began on January 24th when Maisy brought us together to share vaccination information with our community. Since that day, we have volunteered countless hours to cure thousands of vaccine appointments. And as educators, we taught thousands more how to secure their own. As our work progressed, we proudly used our bilingual skills to reach out to our most vulnerable populations, the Black and Latinx communities hardest hit by the COVID-19 virus. And through all of this, we have been teaching our MCPS students during an historic school year. We have certainly been busy this year, and we truly appreciate this recognition. Please continue to encourage your friends and family to get their COVID vaccinations, and thank you again on behalf of all the Vaccine Hunters, Las Casas Vacunas, for recognizing and supporting us.
Y como profesoras del condado de Montgomery, nos sentimos muy orgullosas de este reconocimiento. Ha sido un orgullo poder ayudar a la comunidad durante estos tiempos tan difíciles para todos. Hemos conocido a miles de personas que se han beneficiado de nuestros esfuerzos de una manera directa o indirecta. Mientras más ayudamos, más nos dimos cuenta de la necesidad que había en nuestra comunidad en el condado de Montgomery y otros condados vecinos. Nuestros esfuerzos continúan hoy día, no solamente auspiciando clínicas, sino también enseñándole a otras entidades a cómo crear clínicas que tengan éxito. La lucha continúa. Agradecemos su apoyo y confianza durante estos tiempos de COVID. Las Casas Vacunas continuarán trabajando de noche y día hasta que tengamos a toda la comunidad vacunada.
It is my distinct honor to introduce the next Community Group Award to Women Who Care Ministries, led by the amazing Executive Director, Ms. Judith Clark. The primary mission of WWCM is to help hurting people overcome hardships through offering safety net services to those who are low-income and need assistance, particularly with food insecurity. Currently in its 15th year of operation and through its longstanding partnership with MCPS, countless numbers have been impacted by the service areas the ministry provides assistance to, and thousands of children and families have benefited. I have had the pleasure of personally assisting with the Weekend Meal Program, which currently provides at least 7,000 meals a week to low-income children in MCPS in order to ensure they have healthy food options over the weekends. I have been honored to have spent countless hours with Ms. Clark and her incredible volunteers. The love Ms. Clark and her team show to all members of the community is the reminder we all need of how to love our neighbors. So without further comment, it is my great pleasure to introduce the Montgomery County Board of Education Distinguished Community Group Award to Ms. Judith Clark and the Women Who Care Ministry.
Hi, I'm Judith Clark with Women Who Care Ministries. For over 20 years now, we have been committed to helping hurting people heal in our community, specifically with our Helping Kids Eat Backpack Weekend Meal Program for kids. We're providing weekend meals to make sure that they don't go to bed hungry over the weekend, a time where they're not receiving as much food from Montgomery County Public Schools. Especially during COVID-19, the number of children that we are feeding has escalated, and now we are providing weekend meals to more than 7,000 kids each week. In continued partnership with Montgomery County Public Schools, we distribute through two models. One model is the distribution of the Curbside Grab and Go outside of the schools, and since so many schools are now reopening, we actually take the weekend meals into the school personnel, and they in turn discreetly hand each child in need a weekend bag on Friday that they take home for weekend consumption. Child hunger has reached epidemic proportions, and we're glad to be a part of, because we know that when a child is hungry, he can't learn. We know that when a child is hungry, she suffers academically, and so the Helping Kids Eat Backpack Weekend Meal Program has been a vital part and a core of what we do in helping others in our community. We get so many reports of gratitude from members of the community telling us the difference, specifically that the Weekend Meal Program makes in our child's life, and that just makes us be even more compelled to reach out and help our precious children in need. Again, this summer, we will be providing weekend meals all summer, because hunger doesn't take a vacation, and neither will we. We won't stop until child hunger stops. Child hunger, so serious, yet so solvable. We're grateful to be a part of solving child hunger one day, one precious child at a time. And so on behalf of Women Who Care Ministries, I want to thank the Board of Education for awarding us.
Up next is the Business category. This year's award is presented to one business which has and continues to provide extraordinary expertise and implementation of projects designed to benefit not only our students, but the county as a whole.
The Dine With Dignity Program was launched when our Montgomery County Public Schools leaders realized that the practice of distributing alternative meals to students in our school cafes revealed their circumstances to their peers. The foundation was asked to create this fund to settle unpaid school lunch debt and enable all students to participate in the traditional lunch options regardless of their debt status. We knew the challenge would be getting the message out to the public, and we were fortunate to meet Jeff Stanley at the Starbucks Coffee Company and partner with him on a sticker campaign that made the scope of our educational process national, as people held on to their cups, returned home, and contacted the foundation. We've been fortunate to settle the debt of more than 16,000 students through Dine With Dignity, and to date, it has raised just a little less than $240,000. We're thankful to Starbucks Coffee Company, their partnership in this endeavor, and we deeply appreciate the Board of Education's decision to honor Starbucks Coffee Company for the Dine With Dignity Program. Thank you.
Hey there, MCPS family, what an incredible honor, and I couldn't be more thrilled to accept this Distinguished Service to Public Education Award on behalf of all of our amazing partners who donned the green apron here at Starbucks. Many of us, myself included, being alums of the MCPS system certainly makes this a very personal and why it's so impactful for all of us. At Starbucks, our mission is to inspire and nurture the human spirit, one person, one cup, and one neighborhood at a time. And since the very beginning, it's always been so much more than coffee. We're a people company, a people company serving coffee, and that's what makes us so proud to be celebrated in this way. So whether it was the successful Dine With Dignity campaign that we held in our stores, to our volunteer efforts in nearly a dozen middle schools across the county, or even the work we've done with the students at Thomas Edison, speaking to what it means to be a partner at Starbucks, and the wonderful benefit of a free college education, we know that one thing is for sure, and that is when we use our size and scale for good, incredible impact is to follow, and that's the power behind the green apron. Personally, one of the most thrilling experiences was participating in the game show, Are You Up to the Fifth Grade Challenge, where we competed against some of the smartest young people I've ever encountered. And would you believe, despite the stiff competition, that we pulled off a perfect score between the contestants? But truly, the students were really the real winners. Thank you, MCPS, the MCPS Foundation, and the Board of Ed for this wonderful acknowledgement. On behalf of the nearly 700 Starbucks partners here in Montgomery County, we thank you. It's certainly a distinguished honor.
This next category is the MCPS Staff category, and is presented to five individuals. These individuals continue to go above and beyond their job descriptions, and they make CPS a better place for our students and a great place to work. Congratulations to you all.
Hello, I'm Corinne Tolchinsky-Cohen, Assistant Principal at Cat Mill Elementary School.
And I'm Carrie Viera, an Instructional Specialist in Secondary English.
And we are honored to present Jeffrey Donald with a Distinguished Service Award in Public Education. Jeff's efforts to teach mindfulness programs and practices in Montgomery County Public Schools have made a positive impact on dozens of schools, hundreds of teachers, and thousands of students. Because of Jeff's work, more than 57% of MCPS schools are using mindfulness practices in some way. The student data that's been collected has shown that students have become more resilient, more hopeful, and healthier as a result of participating in mindfulness practices.
Jeff's leadership and service has helped many of our students and staff gain access to the knowledge and tools they need to successfully navigate life's daily stresses, as well as the more acute challenges presented by the pandemic. Students who have participated in Jeff's mindfulness programs have self-reported that they feel calmer, clearer, more energized, and that they can more easily find solutions to their problems. Thank you, Jeff, for ensuring that more of our students and staff thrive when we return to schools full-time in person later this year.
I feel very humbled to be recognized for this award, but I feel I must share this with all of MCPS. I have watched every educator struggle to provide a quality education for every student in this past year under incredibly challenging circumstances, working tirelessly for our kids. Every educator deserves this award. Having said that, there are a few notable individuals who have made my job possible and deserve recognition. Thank you to my Associate Superintendent Rochelle Rubin for having the vision to see the value of mindfulness practices as part of the school day and a beneficial life tool. Thank you to the multitude of educators who have been quietly employing mindfulness for decades, effectively laying the groundwork for this work to move forward. Thank you to the entire office and staff of student and family support and engagement for their teamwork in supporting the implementation of mindfulness practices, in addition to the multitude of services they already provide. To conclude, I leave you with a thought. Take time to be grateful. Take time to be kind. Take time to serve and watch your blessings grow.
Since joining MCPS, Dr. Darrell Howard has made
Since joining MCPS, Dr. Darrell Howard has made an outstanding impact on our educational community. He stands alongside some of the most talented and committed educators and organizers that share a passion for enlightening young people and supporting our educators of color. As a former school counselor at Montgomery Blair High School, he understands the importance of academic achievement, social-emotional learning, personal relationship building, and mentorship when it comes to supporting young men of color. Through teaching and organizing, Dr. Howard has built great relationships that link the networks of public schools, college communities, and workplace professionals to broaden the exposure of the underserved and historically marginalized. He's been recognized by many universities and community groups and received awards for his service efforts for social change. In a nutshell, Dr. Howard represents the best that Montgomery County has to offer, and I'm glad that he is being recognized in this way.
Good day, everyone. Good day. Darrell Howard here, and I am excited to be a distinguished service award winner for this year. Pretty humbled by this. As you, so in customary fashion, I should probably begin by thanking thanking my wife, thanking my children, my parents, my family members and friends, all who have supported me in my professional endeavors and allowed me to be the individual who pushes himself to impact children and impact the future of our society. I was humbled when I received recognition of this, I really was. And I started to get emails from people across the district that I haven't been in contact with in a very long time. I've been in the district since 2004. And receiving emails from individuals saying, hey, congratulations. But when I saw the words "well-deserved," I was really taken aback by that. And I'll tell you why. I don't think that I'm doing anything special in the work that I do. I think I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. And one person, a dear friend of mine, colleague, said, hey, Doc, you are, you create a space where you make yourself necessary. When he said that, I was like, wow. That's the type of impact that I hope to have on individuals, but he said you make yourself necessary in spaces. And so, I'm thinking that I'm just learning and growing like everybody else, but people are obviously seeing me as a teacher and a leader in education, and I'm humbled by that. And I'll just talk about really quickly some of the folks that have influenced me. I think about my Blair High School counseling team that I spent so many years with, who pushed my thinking. I think about the impact of the DuBois Honor Society and the young men and women there that I was able to support. The individuals of the Bond Learning and Leadership Institute for young men that we've created so that we can provide a safe space for social-emotional learning for our young guys. My folks in the Equity Initiatives Unit, my thought partners there who are always pushing me further. The individuals that I've encountered in the HR courses that I've taught, Ethnic Groups: American Society, Education That's Multicultural, the Equity Education and Excellence Program with McDaniel College, and the folks that I've been able to teach and to learn with through those initiatives. And lastly, again, my Bond Project family who nominated me for this award, but also other individuals that allow me to kind of grow and to push them, but also allow them to push me. So this is truly an honor. It's something that I'll reflect on for my time in MCPS, and I couldn't be more happy in this moment. And I appreciate you all for celebrating this with me, and I appreciate you all for inspiring. This is something that many educators deserve, and I'm honored to share this award. So thank you and have an incredible day.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Principal Lounds and her team at Rock Creek Forest Elementary School. My family and I were delighted to hear they are being recognized for their hard work, dedication, and their overall approach to serving students and families during a very challenging and unique year. I cannot understate how Principal Lounds has positively affected the lives of my children and some close friends at RCF during the past two years. With her whole student, and I should say, whole adult approach to her work, the culture of RCF aligns so well to our parenting philosophies. We love that she nurtures curious young minds to become lifelong learners, and through her team that includes Ms. Mensa, Senor Bilbao, Senor Nunez, Mr. Santos, Ms. Vicenza, and all the other adults who taught my daughter, we experience their love and commitment to serving all students at the highest level. Principal Lounds walks the walk and has successfully facilitated her team to do the same. We remain grateful and congratulate the entire Rock Creek Forest faculty on the Distinguished Service Award. Principal Lounds, you and your team are fabulous. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Lounds, and it is my honor to accept this recognition on behalf of Rock Creek Forest Elementary School. I have the honor of leading Rock Creek Forest Elementary School with Isabel Mensa. I am grateful for the support of our Director Sean McGee, Associate Superintendent Diane Morris, MCPS Central Office, and the Board of Education. Rock Creek Forest Elementary School is a special place. It is a special place because of our 742 students, their families, and our teachers and staff. We come to Rock Creek Forest from all over the world, celebrating diverse cultures, representing all races, and speaking many different languages. Together, we ensure that Rock Creek Forest Elementary School is a model for the world, where the hopes and dreams of all of our children become reality. We are committed to equity and excellence. We are committed to excellence and equity in a joyous, rigorous learning environment. Rock Creek Forest has many different programs: pre-K, PEP, autism, focus, and a Spanish immersion program. As our grade-five students sang at their promotion, "C C mi moyo." We are one school. Together, we learn and we celebrate each other. This has been a year like no other. I am in awe of what our Rock Creek Forest students, teachers, staff, families, and communities have accomplished. Together, we ensured that Rock Creek Forest is a meal site for our cluster. We partnered with Kind to ensure giant gift cards for our community. We joined Families for Families, a nonprofit combating food insecurity during the pandemic. Together, we connected our students with technology and access to learning platforms. Together, we learned to Zoom, read, write, and solve math problems in both English and Spanish. Together, we became a No Place for Hate school. Together, we stayed connected and took care of each other, even when we were apart. Together, we rolled out the red carpet, prepared our school, and reopened Rock Creek Forest Elementary School safely. Together, we celebrated our grade-five students as the BCC jazz band played. The Rock Creek Forest students, faculty, staff, families, and community are a team. We are a family. Our students are strong, they are resilient, and they know they can do and be anything they hope and dream. Thank you.
We are so proud that Robin McHugh has been named a recipient of the Distinguished Service to Public Education Award by the Board of Education. Robin brings out the best in those around her and demonstrates an unwavering commitment and dedication to the MCPS athletics program. Her passion and love for her job is infectious and evident in all that she does. In many ways, along with our student athletes and coaches, Robin is the heartbeat of our program. Robin exemplifies the vision, mission, and raise core values of MCPS athletics. She is committed to promoting athletics around the state to raise the standard of excellence across our program. She is also a number-one fan of our student athletes. She can be seen supporting our teams at various events across the state of Maryland. On behalf of all of MCPS athletics, we congratulate Robin on this outstanding achievement. We are so proud of you and blessed to have you in the MCPS athletics family.
I'd like to start by thanking the Board of Education for recognizing all the distinguished service award winners today. For me, it's a totally unexpected honor to be included with such a distinguished group of award winners. I am truly humbled by the award, since I feel like I get to do work I happen to love and truly believe in every day. I'd also like to thank my director, Dr. Jeff Sullivan, for his incredible leadership, his support, his aptitude for being innovative in all situations, and his ability to never lose focus on what is important, our student athletes. I am grateful to have had the opportunity to be a part of MCPS athletics for almost 20 years. Through the years, I have worked with dedicated people that have done everything in their power to support students. I love that I get to work with people who motivate me to grow, work harder, achieve more, and even smile. Each day through my work, I get to help support students, parents, guardians, coaches, athletic specialists, and various other stakeholders. This year certainly brought challenges, and I am happy to say that I was part of a team of people that never gave up on finding a way to bring the joy of athletics back to student athletes. From starting with creating virtual opportunities for student athletes to interact with their coaches, to system-wide speakers to engage and support student athletes, to bringing back in-person athletics in February, to finally being able to see our spring athletes be able to participate in state playoffs once again. This year has been quite a journey. Although I will be forever grateful for receiving this award, my real reward is that I work with great people, I do work that matters to me, and that I am part of a great team. We truly raise. For those of you who aren't familiar with this acronym, RAISE stands for Respect in Sportsmanship, Academic Excellence, Integrity and Character, Spirited in Safe Competition, and Equity in Access. Thank you.
Mr. Watcher deserves this award because he is the kindest teacher I've ever met. When I lost my grandma this year to COVID, he was the teacher that comforted me and got me through it and made my assignments easier so I could really make it through the school year throughout that entire thing. Mr. Watcher really deserves this award.
Mr. Watcher deserves this award for his passion in teaching math. One of the biggest things that I liked about him was how energetic he was in the classroom. In addition to teaching us math, he also encouraged us to get involved in extracurriculars that allowed us to apply what we learned. He would often come to support me and my robotics team at our competitions, and I thought that was a really great thing for him to do.
My name is Kenneth Watcher. I'm a recipient of the Distinguished Service Award for Public Education in Montgomery County School System. I am honored to receive this award. I appreciate all the effort it took to get me to this point. I want to use this to remind everyone that this award is truly for all the teachers in Montgomery County School System who work tirelessly behind the scenes, day in, day night, to make sure our students need all and got all they have to succeed. Thank you, Board of Education. I want to especially thank all students who, in the face of global pandemic, have endured and have been through a difficult time learning stuff, submitting stuff online. Thank you, students. I want to thank all parents who trust us with their babies every day. Finally, I want to acknowledge students who took time to write to the Board of Education. Aleah Kazim, Afiz Aino, Ephraim, Ruth, Ephraim, Lydia, Chloe, Chappelle, and a host of students who wrote to the board acknowledging the fact that we want to make everything work for them. Finally, I want to remind everyone that this is a reminder for all who work for Montgomery County School System, who send their children to Montgomery County System, that our journey has just begun. Thank you, everyone.
This next category recognizes our school service volunteers. This individual is awarded for her amazing support to faculty, students, and family at the schools within which she volunteers and the larger surrounding community. Congratulations to Jessica Barellis.
I'm honored to have nominated Jessica Barellis for the Distinguished Service Award. She's a dear friend and continued mentor. A mom of three, her incredible and generous work has been featured in The Washington Post, Evening News, Good Morning America, Today Show, and more. Over the past year, she founded an emergency food pantry that serves 10 Gathersbury School communities, organized 30 food distributions, launched a free student bike program to access free meals, and started a national movement to build desks for low-income students. She was recently named a Capital One Community Hero in recognition for her community service during the COVID pandemic. She's been a community volunteer for over 20 years and continues to amaze me with all the incredible work that she continues to do and lead and is most deserving of this award. Thank you.
Hi, I'm so grateful to accept this award. What a difficult year. The pandemic has been incredibly hard to navigate, but has also highlighted the importance of PTAs, community, and educational equity. You know, I started this work eight years ago. When I attended my first PTA meeting and saw that I was the only parent in the room that looked like me, I wanted to understand why, and I began walking door to door, introducing myself to other parents, asking questions, and talking about the PTA. I did this over time, and even in the rain, and through person-to-person connections, deep listening, and being relevant, we scaled from a team of one to a dynamic, engaged community with standing-room-only Spanish-language PTA meetings. And I applied the same approach when, at the beginning of the pandemic, I started asking our school families these two questions. What do you need, and how can I help you? And these questions have guided my PTA and my equity work along with the belief that all students deserve the tools, resources, and services needed to succeed, and that all school families can make meaningful contributions to the PTA, whether it's providing food, school supplies, or basic need items. We care about the whole child and the whole community. I never expected to inspire so many others to join this work, but it's really a testament to the beautiful, generous spirit of our community and to all of the value that Latino and Spanish-speaking parents bring to the table. You don't need talent or resources to make a difference, really just the desire to help. And when you're doing work that matters, others come along. And when you have privilege, you use it to create space for others. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to serve my community during the pandemic. I'm grateful to my wonderful friends and collaborators who nominated me for this honor. Equity inclusion are really at the core of our values and our mission, both within MCPS but also PTA. And I'm so grateful to highlight this work and to highlight the value of our diverse parent volunteers and leaders. Congrats to all of the honorees and awardees, and thank you again for this honor.
Our last category this evening is the Individual Pioneer Award, which is presented to two individuals who have made extraordinary contributions to Montgomery County Public Schools and whose impact has had profound system-wide effect on MCPS. Morris Hudson, outstanding success with students who have needed opportunities over the last 30 years. And Dr. Smith, outstanding, extraordinary, very skilled, open to all groups, and you will be hearing more about those of them. I just wanted to say those few words, they are really wonderful people and have helped us so much.
It was my great honor to nominate Mr. Morris Hudson, Director of Brothers Academy, for the Individual Pioneer Award from the Montgomery County Board of Education. Starting in 1984 with just four students at Anas Dine High School, Mr. Morris has been providing mentorship, both academically and socially, to Montgomery County Public Schools. In the close to 30 years that he has been involved in this program, he has mentored over 5,000 students. Additionally, many of the students, when they exit the program upon graduation, come back and mentor current students. It's been a great honor to nominate Mr. Hudson for this well-deserved award.
Greetings. Morris Hudson here, founder of Brothers Academy. My goodness, I cannot believe that it's been 37 years. You were 13, 37 years ago, you're 50 now, and we have some great MCPS alumni that have been part of our ranks. Today, I'm very, very happy to be the recipient of your Distinguished Service Award. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work with a great partner like Montgomery County Public Schools. I mean, the things that you do for kids are phenomenal. It was Benjamin Mays that said, "It's not your environment, it's you." The quality of your mind, the education of your soul, and the determination of your will. The quality of your mind, the education of your soul, and the determination of your will that decides your future and shapes your life. It's on this premise that Brothers was founded. Brothers is a group of young men who came together to support each other in their academic, social, and emotional growth. The image of the minority male was our primary focus, and because of that, we've been able to serve over 6,000 families. We're very, very pleased, and as far as I'm concerned, I accept this award on behalf of the entire Brothers Academy. In fact, this award is for you. The people that are out there now, the people that work so hard to make sure that our kids have what they need and deserve. Thank you so much.
It is my distinct honor to introduce the next award, the Distinguished Service Award for Individual Pioneer, to Dr. Jack Smith. Dr. Smith has dedicated his life to equity and education. As a teacher, principal, administrator, local superintendent, interim state superintendent, father and friend, Dr. Smith always gave his full heart and commitment to the job. His passion for high-quality education, coupled with his ongoing drive that "all means all," made Dr. Smith a warrior for equitable education. Dr. Smith's steadfast goal has always been to provide all students, regardless of their learning needs, race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status, with options and choice upon graduation. Specifically, we laud the work done under Dr. Smith during his tenure with MCPS. Over the five-plus years that Dr. Smith led the system, we saw expansions in dual-language programs, more students receiving technical education licenses, more dual-enrollment programs, and the continuation of high achievement and graduation rates in MCPS. Dr. Smith's focus on not just access, but also meaningful opportunity led to the creation of an equity accountability framework that allows staff to follow the individual progress of students and determine the appropriate supports. As the 14th-largest school district in the nation, this individual-level analysis is critical to the system's ability to provide individualized support and ensure all students find success at MCPS. So without further ado, it is my honor and my pleasure to introduce the Montgomery County Board of Education Distinguished Service Individual Pioneer Award to Dr. Jack Smith.
Thank you so much for this Distinguished Service Award. I'm so honored to be given this award. The fact that the word pioneer is in the award is such an honor because I believe that we all have to be pioneers as we serve the children in our communities. We have to go out and search and try and find the ways to best support their well-being and their learning. And I want to thank the Board of Education for this award. I want to thank the community and the staff and the students of MCPS for who you are and what you do and all of the wonderful things that happen in this community. Receiving is just one of the great honors that I've had in my life, and I sincerely appreciate it, and I'm humbled by it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for joining the 24th Annual Distinguished Service Awards for the Board of Education. I'm Carla Silvestre, Vice President of the Board. Thank you so much again for being here tonight. We are virtual, but we still want to take the time to thank all of the organizations and individuals that have done so much for our students throughout the year. I hope that tonight you learned about their contributions, but also about how much we as a board and a school system value their support. Showing gratitude is ever so important, especially in these times. We could not be there to shake our awardees' hands, but we definitely want to express our gratitude. Together, we are going to get through this pandemic, and MCPS is going to be better than ever. To our 22 award recipients, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you have done for our students. And for everyone watching tonight, thank you for your support. Have a good evening.